Yo, 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 yo. Yo, 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 yo. Welcome back to the J-Strike stream. It's time for Sea Viper ranked. I'm scared, I'm nervous. I have to get to master by any means necessary, but before I do that, a few things. First things first. Look at this. Look at this. Oh snap, he doesn't show up on the green screen! He doesn't show up on the green screen. Schumagorath, they call him gargantos for legal reasons. He is Schumagorath to me always. That's crazy, he doesn't show, he doesn't show up on the green screen, that's crazy. Insane. I haven't opened it up yet, it will be sitting back on the shelf, I just got the box, but the box is so nice and pretty? I might just keep the box around. I might just keep the box around. Yeah, this is fire, just got it today. I will open it up later. It has a glare on the box. There we go. There we go. Yeah, Schumagorath, sitting in the back. That's number one. Number two. Give me one second. I got Schuma in the back with me, number two. Wait. I only have two more left. I did these off-stream, I recorded them, I will be making a video, hopefully it comes out on Tuesday. We'll see, I don't know, we'll see. It'll come out next week, hopefully Tuesday. But I did get to some combo trials. These things are a pain in my ass. Combo trials are a pain in my ass to say the least. But enough combo trials. What are we working with? That's our color. My title is... Until I get the one that I desire. Codename Crimson Viper. I'm trying to make sure I get rid of... Okay. Um, custom challenge, what do we got? This one's clean. Uh, with the fire on, that's kinda slick, I like that. Gotta have the third strike. Yeah. Yeah, that'll do. Yeah, that'll do. That'll do for me. There she is. Alright, so how these rank streams are gonna go? I'm going to the training lab. I'm going to learn and/or practice one or two combos situations type stuff. Um, I have some stuff written here. What it, what is, what is this? Oh, this is for a punish. Why is he blocking? Oh, this is now for punish. If they do something crazy, I could do... Whoops. Why not write that down? That doesn't work. Charge? Into... Oh no, I can't do it. I gotta get this down. It's not even that hard. But it's gonna be embarrassing when I go for it and I don't get it. And then, see if I can get that again. That might be a little, a little combo. Oh whoops. It needs to work mid-stage? I need a combo that works mid-stage and in the corner. Something that works in all situations. Um... So if they do DP... Could I punish this? Could I punish that? Wake-up reversal. Put him on EXDP. Nope. Does that punish? That's something, hold on. Block after first hit. Does that punish? Does the punish counter? Block after... Ahhh! It won't let me have it. I got it, it's too specific, this is already too much. If I gotta do all of that just to get that. Um, do I need a punish counter combo? Yes, but not right now. Right now I need... Right now I need... Into that. That's all I need. I keep doing, I keep doing just quarter circle back for the, for the, for the kick, I need to do forward. Tiger knee forward. Here we go. Uh oh. And then DP. Well, not DP, but thunder knuckle, heavy thunder knuckle. What can I do? No, you can't cancel heavy punch, it has to be crouch heavy punch. That's my combo. That's my combo, what are we thinking, what are we thinking, what are we thinking? What are we thinking about that? What are we thinking about that? I just have to remember the tiger knee. That's my combo. That's the J-Strike biggest combo! That's combo number one. Um, I'm gonna let y'all see my notes. Y'all ready? Boom. Waits. False alarm, boom. So here's some notes that I've taken just for combos, for the combo trials and just for combos that I want. Um... This one I'm taking out for now. This is combo two, that's gonna be my big, if I can get a heavy punch, I'll do that one combo. Combo one is gonna be even easier. Combo one is gonna go... Light kick is four frames. Crouching punch is four frames, I might just do this. I'll just do three, three lights, just in case I spaced them wrong. I don't know if I can get all four all the time. No. Um... What can I get? Oh, that does combo. It's like a link though. That's my second combo. Oh, a whiff. It shouldn't all hit, it shouldn't whiff on hit. No. Unless I... Jump cancel that. How do you jump cancel, it says tiger knee, s- super jump cancel. I hold forward. No. Right. That doesn't even combo off a jab. Of course it wouldn't. And then there's... This is a natural combo. Oh! That's pretty good. Cause I can do that off a super, I can do that, that might be my super, that might be my super. That might be the super. No. That might be, that had, might have to be the easy way to get into super. Easy way to confirm in a super. Whack combo, no damage, very whack, very corny. Is this going to, um, whoops? Is this going to... Oh, that one's forward. Okay, level one is double quarter circle forward. Level two is with punches, level three... So it backwards and kick. That's no damage, but it's very easy to do. It's very easy to do though. It's very easy to do. So combo one, it's probably gonna be... Light punch, light punch, light punch. Quarter circle back. Heavy punch. That's the combo for now. Boom, boom, boom. Easy. I can confirm that. Um... Another question I have. Is this safe? No, why would I think that? He can jab and he will jab. Hey now. Hey now. It doesn't combo. If they block it, I'm safe though. And they might not block that last hit. They're gonna try, they're gonna try to, they're gonna try to punish. I don't really have a combo for that though. Dang it. I do have a combo for that. Medium, crouch medium, gotta do some of these. Gotta do some of this. What is that on? What the heck? You spaced that out, that's minus two? Oh my god. New donkey kick. I'm safe, I'm not plus, but I am safe. No. Eight frame heavy, seven... Six. That's eight. That's nine. Five. Four. Okay. I might have everything I need to get into plat. I want a drive... Wait, what I need to do is practice... This, is just crouch, heavy punch, good luck with the placements, appreciate, appreciate, appreciate it. I'm low-key kinda hoping I do get into gold, even though that's down there, down there. Just cause, um, after I was playing with Ed, um... It is easier to like pick up stuff in a fight with lower level players. Whereas if I get placed in platinum, there's, there, it's, 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 they're, they're, they're insane people in plat. There's insane players, there's people that do insane options that aren't logical. And I don't know if that's the best learning environment. And then diamond is just people who are actually good at the game but haven't gotten to master yet. So gold is like... I can learn something. I can get used to the... Battle flow. I don't know what else to call it. I forgot he's always blocking. No. I did quarter circle back kick? Oopsie. That's my biggest combo! Can I get a super after that? Probably after that. Yeah, probably after... What's the... That's the level one. I'm gonna be spamming level one, level one is the, what do you want I'm spamming? I'm probably not even gonna try to save it for level two and level three. Uh oh. Ahhh! Ahhh! There's more time to wait. My biggest combo, that does decent damage! I'm not mad at the damage. I just have to get used to this more. There's a little time to wait, there's a little t- time... After the burn kick and super. Oh whoops. Oh whoops. Okay. I'm not doing anything fancy with the most complicated character in the game. Okay. Does this work? After drive impacts? Oh whoops. I had to save the thing. Wait a minute. Uh oh. Nah, I can't do that. Crouch heavy. No super? Oh no! Okay. I'm anticipating a lot of drive impacts. Oh man. I'm anticipating a lot of drive impacts. I didn't even hit the jump. I didn't even hit the jump. And if I don't have super... Oh buddy. I am struggling, alright, let me, let me, let me, there has to be easier way to do the... Tiger knee super jump cancel. So I hold forward, I tap done again. Oh yeah, I have to play this game basically, my right thumb has to be on jump, and I don't like that. Oh, no, no, no! I'm gonna try to do something a little more consistent. I'm gonna see if I can get this down a little more consistently in a new way. And then burn kick would be... Hold on. Hold on. I'm trying to rewire my brain. I'm rewiring my brain. I'm not getting, oh, I'm pressing, I'm pressing, yeah. I'm pressing kick. It has to be crouch. I don't even have to let go of down. I'm just now realizing that. Hold on. Okay. So if you hold down and press forward two times, you will get DP. But you gotta time it right. I don't know if that's harder or easier than the other way I was doing it. Hmm... I'm trying to figure out an easier way to do this combo. Hold forward. And then... Cause I don't think the burn kick is that hard to do. The song's a jam? It is very long though. It's a very long song, but it's a jam. Okay. So... I wish there was an easy way to do this, what's the easy way to do DP? My way of doing DP is holding forward, pressing down, and then letting go of forward, and then that's how I do DP. The problem is to do super jump, well, the problem is it starts with... Crouch heavy, so I have to do down for the cross heavy, forward, down, forward again. And that's kinda tripping me up. Even though that's just, it's basically just super, right? But also I have to end it with punch and jump. And then I have to do, uh, high jump cancel, super jump cancel, into burn kick. And that's kinda tricky. How do I do that? Hold on! I'm doing high jump cancel for the... I keep, I'm, I'm trying to do high jump cancel with the... With the seismic, it's just a special cancel. I'm tripping. I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping, I'm tripping. I'm making this more complicated than it has to. I'm making this way more complicated than it has to be. That's a funny combo. Okay combo this into. Crouching. No. It has to be crouching heavy, ah. I don't know why this is so hard for me to do. I haven't even tried on to play a two side. Oh buddy. Why? Why? Whoops. Okay. It's all about timing. Whoops. That's a combo I need to practice. This is a combo I need to practice. Oh. I have more time to cancel into seismic after heavy punching, I think. Dang it. Ah, I gotta wait. I was trying to do super on that one. I think you could do any super you want. Yeah, you can land any super you want out of this combo. I like this combo. It's easy. Ah, I did a heavy. I need to, I need to do crouching heavy punch. But it's into DP which is hard for me. I did the wrong one. That's gonna get me punched in the head. There's gonna be a lot of grab. You know what? Actually, let me do it on this side. Let me, let me, let me stop. Let me stop. Let me stop. Let me stop. Um. How do you do? Oh, doing it on this side is awkward. Doing it on this side is awkward. Doing it on this side is so awkward. Can you do a Sea Viper versus Chun-Li? You're crazy for requesting that. You're trying to see the baddies on the screen. That's not up to me. When I go into my placement matches, we just better hope that there is a Chun-Li. And a costume that you would prefer. Unless you're talking about uh just in the training room. I don't have that costume though. I don't have that special costume that she got. I don't have that, I haven't paid for that costume. This is the closest I can get you, buddy. This is the closest we get. Sea Viper's not a baddie. What? You're tripping. Unless you're referring to her as a good person, in which case, maybe. I don't even know about that. I might have to stick with uh a much more basic combo until I practice that combo. I might just have to do a lot more ignorant stuff. I'm just gonna go, I'm just gonna, sometimes you just gotta, you just gotta, you just gotta. You just gotta. Sometimes we're running, we might run into like another um Sea Viper, take some time to steal some of her tech. Steal some of their tech. You know the vibes. The real question is, why is that in the wrong folder? She's a good, she's a good, she's not a baddie. I see what you mean. Hold on. Why? OBS is being real, you know? OBS like right now. Okay. I'll do that. Let's just play the most basic Sea Viper you've ever seen. The most, you know? Literally the most strike throw Sea Viper you can imagine. Two is better than in the black and white. I like the white. I think it's, I do like the original black and white. It is slick. But um I like the white just cuz it's unique. Alright. I thought I could pair that. Jump. That was terrible. That was a terrible round for me. Alright. I'm gonna see if I can Right? 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 If only I had a combo. If only I had a combo right there. That's where the combo comes in. Alright, maybe I go back to the lab. Maybe I go back to the lab. How do you get the punch off of that? Oh, I'm terrible. I told him too much? Ah, okay. I do actually need a combo, actually. It turns out, as it turns out, you do need a combo. Alright. How did that work? Right, wake up super. Okay, turns out you do need a combo. Turns out you do need a combo. Let's take an opportunity to take that match and learn something from it. What's the title? I should have, okay. I thought I titled it something different. The stream is accurate. I will be getting gold. Um. Open recent replays. So let's take this match and draw something from it. Now, he did like a cross-up type jump. That loses to that. I can do an air to air though. I forgot what the whoops. Can you do? No. You can only do medium punch. Medium punch. Okay. So medium punch, air to air. I thought you could do something else. Okay. Is crouch medium kick, crouch medium kick is not cancel, it's like special jump cancelable? Hold on. So I jumped, I jumped right here. What if I did? Super jump. Super jump. I, I'm doing quarter circle back, hold on. Super jump. I need to do this more. Even that worked, oh my gosh. And punish. I need to do this more. Even normal jump. Hold on. Whoops. He's minus eight right here? Oh wow. I don't know what to do after this though. Um. This is not special cancelable. She got no special cancelable moves. Except crouching heavy punch. My worst enemy. Hold on, gotta do light. That reaches though. I need to work on crouching heavy punch. Cuz this, this is the perfect time to do that combo. That was the perfect time to do that combo. So lesson one, you do need combos actually. You do need combos actually. Hold on. That. Especially if it cancels, especially if it all punish cancels, or punish counters. Oh my gosh. That's gonna be the bane of my existence. This combo is the bane of my existence cuz of crouch heavy punch. And it's not even that hard to do. It's really not that hard. I'm making it way more harder than it needs to be. Oh my gosh. Ah, I let go of down, right? Oh my gosh, oh my gosh. I need, this is the combo I'm gonna have to practice day and night. Cuz it leads into soup, if you don't do the thunder knuckle, it also leads into super. If you just mash down and right, it kinda works. This might be the way. I wonder if I can do I could hold down. I could hold down right here. I don't wanna do that though. It feels more ma, more natural to do it flickering. If I can just get, there's nothing you can do off of heavy punch. Other than like some kinda crazy cancel. Other than that. I don't wanna plan for that though. I don't wanna plan for this though. Hold on. I could do that. I could do that. This could be the way. Why isn't there no jams? This could be it. It costs two meter though. And the other one can only cost one. How much damage does that do? Twenty-one? And my highest is twenty-nine. This needs to be the combo. And I need to do medium kick out of the fire. Cause I need to got forward momentum to carry me into the heavy thunder knuckle. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. I just gotta take it one thing at a time. That's how all combos work. Then I need to do it on this side. Oh buddy. This is one of those things where I have to do a separate input when I'm on the right-hand side. Oh my gosh. This is tough. And then... Yeah. Oh my tiger knee on my left side! This would be so much easier on a fight stick. Hold on, how do I do it on this side? I could just start doing this raw. You're not gonna punish that. Whoops. I need to do that on this side. Is it gonna work on this side? I have no idea. No. Oh my gosh! Oh my gosh, I can't tiger knee on the right side! Unless I do... Oh no. I gotta use the jump on my right hand. I gotta essentially start playing this game with jump on the right hand. I don't like that. Is that something that all C-vipers are doing on Loverless, if they're playing on Loverless? Cause that does, that does change it up. That does make things easier if you use jump on the right hand. Now I gotta do crouch heavy DP. I could, I should probably learn how to do this on this side too. That means my left hand is no longer in control of jump. My left hand is just doing direction, um, like, left, right, and down. And now my right hand is in charge of the jump, which is a style I don't play. Even doing this is, is so much. Oh my gosh. I have to readjust my brain. And that's gonna probably affect my play for like, other characters. This isn't something I could just apply to C-Viper. And then... So now I gotta rework my brain. Um, I think I did light instead of medium, but it still worked, cause I'm in the corner. I gotta do crouching. Even doing a crouch into DP seems like it's harder. Is it always like this for every character? Cause I feel like it isn't. I feel like it's not this hard, it's not this... Well, he has heavy. There's a bigger buffer window on this, I feel. I think maybe it's just cause his heavy takes so much longer to come out. Maybe? Maybe I'm tripping, I don't know. It's the hardest thing in the world. Maybe I should try it from here. Whoops. Not a combo. Do... Block out the first hit. And thunder knuckles backward. It does feel weird that burn kick is forward, but I understand it's easier for a super jump cancel. For some people. I feel like it's harder for me. Oh. Okay. Oh my gosh. Um, any songs playing? Any song we'd like to play? Any, any, any... Yeah, it's gonna have to play. Okay. Okay. That's one. Nope. Nope. That's two. I feel like this is, this combo has to be the key. My key combo. Cause it leads into super and all that. Ah, my hand is so weak! My hand is so weak! I wonder if I can do... This might be the play over here, on this side. Just constantly hold forward. Okay, that might be it. I'm doing quarter circle back, cause I'm a fool. Into... Oh my gosh. And I still need to work on tiger knee. I'm doing, I'm still playing with my left hand. Hold on. So from now on, my left hand, my left thumb, is no longer gonna be on jump. This is gonna take longer than I thought. I'll need to hold forward too. That's gonna suck. I guess I can still use my left hand for parry. The way my controller is set up. Into... Into... Uh, was that light? I don't think I, I don't think I... Super jump cancelled forward. This is killing my hands. I don't think I've ever had to do a crouch heavy into a DP before. So figuring this out on Hitbox is tough. Wonder if I have my... You're gonna see something weird. Hang on. Chill, chill. Oh, I have the fight stick open over here! My fight stick is available. I don't wanna switch the back to fight stick though. I can't do it. Okay. That was light punch, but I moved forward. Whoops. I need to learn to use my right thumb. This is so weird. My left thumb is just hovering in the air. This is so weird. Okay. Did I save it? Yes, I did. And I need to make sure I don't let go of down too soon. Come on. Come on. I'm doing that, hello? My gosh! This is the type of character you just have to play in the lab for ten hours. I kinda wanna hold off on Branks. And I'm not going forward on my super jump. I hate doing lab streams, cause they're not, I feel like they're not as interesting to you guys. Even though I need to do them. Like, this is the kinda stuff I need to be doing off-stream. And then actually playing the matches on-stream. But I'm, I'm not good enough to just take a character and just do whatever I want. Oh my gosh. Okay. Can I get the DP? That being said, this is the kinda stuff you need to be doing. With a technical character like C-Viper. I can't just bullshit my way through this. And this is gonna be my bread and butter. My bread and butter is this hard, I can't just bullshit my way through this. I'm still plus on that though. So even if I fuck up the, uh, super cancelled, super jump. It's a side swap and I'm plus. Even though I'd, I'm pressing, I'm using my left, I'm using my left, I'm using my left. I just caught myself using my left hand to do the jump. From now on, I'm a right-hand jumper. I need to hold left. Hold left. Start? I can't even restart! I didn't, ah! What punch? Heavy punch, heavy punch, heavy punch. I need to hold forward during... Super? 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 Huh? Who told you, who told you, who told you to do that? Okay. With the right-hand jump method. Cause I'm not sharing this button. I need two jumps. I need a controller with two jumps. Is there a controller with two jumps? A Hitbox with two jumps? Even typing right now hurts. Oh, no. Oh my gosh. It's not legal. If it has two jumps, it's not legal. Ahhh! Even though I'm not even going to a tournament, ahhh! Ahhh, no! Even though I'm not even going to a tournament, whack, I still wanna have a controller that... Even though I'm not even going to a tournament, whack, I still wanna have a controller that's like legal and normal-ish. Oh my gosh. This is gonna happen all throughout a match. Okay. Ahhh, I'm doing jump with my left. Let me make sure I have it over here with my right hand. Whoops. I forgot everything I learned. Oh my gosh. Don't even need to do it with my left. Oh, my right hand. It's easier to do with my, with jump with my left hand when I'm on the left side, on player one side, but it's easier to do with my right hand if I'm on player two's side. And I don't think swapping back and forth is a good idea. Which is corny. Are you kidding me? I didn't think this combo would be this hard. And the hardest part is getting crouch heavy punch before the DP. I mean, I did forward for the thunder knuckle. It's the simplest stuff. Okay, even though I didn't combo, I still wanted to make sure it's in my hands. Luckily for me, nothing is quarter circle forward punch. There's no super behind that, so I could just kinda match that. It's easier to kinda do this on the controller. If I could do crouching heavy punch. Um, if she blocks... I'm minus five, but if I cancel into... Oh my gosh. Does she interrupt that? Oh, block. Oh. She could. Corny. So this is really a combo, a punish combo, punish combo, punish combo. If I cancelled it, it's still counter. That's fair. Do the super jump? You can jab out of it. Corny. But not if I mess up the super jump cancel. Why are we nuts? What is happening? What is happening? Um... Why am I not getting... Okay. I don't know what's going on with that. Oh my gosh. I work on one thing and I forget the next. And now I can't super jump cancel anymore. What is this? I do it perfectly every time on its own. It is supposed to be my stronger side. I'm not holding forward. But when I hold forward, I get super jump forward instead of high jump cancel burn kick. If I neutral jump, it gets the heavy kick. If I hold forward, it doesn't. I gotta hold forward. I gotta hold forward. But let go of jump. Oh my gosh. This is the most complicated that I'm gonna take this character. This is the most complicated combo I'm gonna have to take this character. This is all I got, man. At least for now, even though it's only day two. And I still feel like I'm overcomplicating this DP motion. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh. I might have to do this over the weekend. I'll try to learn how to do this over the weekend and come back on Monday stronger than ever. Oh my gosh. I might just have to keep doing this over the weekend. Cuz I don't mind losing all my placement matches and then getting something lower, but I feel like it's a bad stream. But also being in a lab is, lab is a bad stream too. We might have to end stream early. Cuz I don't wanna be in a lab all stream. But I don't wanna go into the, I don't wanna go into my placement matches with no combo. I don't wanna go into placement matches with no combo. I'll watch this one a little more. See if I can gain anything out of this and then I might just have to call it a stream. Cuz I didn't really have any time to lab yesterday doing all those combo trials. Like what do you do, he, he's probably just do... Also, how did that not hit? How did I not punish that? I could've did that. Donkey kick is ridiculous. That's not a combo. Whoops. What do you mean, huh? That's kinda the combo I want. It's clean looking. Ah, I missed the second jab. Also, this is still my first time returning to Street Fighter since playing 2XK. Oh, are you kidding me? Okay. That's crazy. What would I get out of here? What do you... That combo I was working on? That combo I was working on? Oh, are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Literally that? That's, that's decent, that's decent damage too. Are you kidding me? What? I gotta be more precise in my DP motion. Ahhh. I'm not believing in myself. I gotta be cleaner. Which I already knew, but still. Are you kidding me? Also, the good thing is I never entered burnout. I wasn't really using drive meter. And if I can keep it that way, if I can use one thing of drive meter for every combo I do, I think that's still pretty good. Why is he hitting me with that? Now I'm not even... I'm still using my left hand for jump. Can you believe it? Oh, buddy. Are you, oh buddy. Yeah, it's just gonna be, I gotta just get that combo. If I could get that combo alone and then mix it with my light combo, I'll be stronger when I return. Why did I say I was gonna get this character to master? That's gonna take me forever. Alright. It's gonna be a shorter stream today. I wanted a longer stream. But I don't want a boring stream. And that's kinda what makes it hard to stream at all. That's what kinda making it harder for me to stream, me personally. I'm not confident when I go into these matches without learning a combo. And I'm doing it with the most complicated character. I could've waited till Alex came out to say some crazy nonsense like that. I don't know. I still like this character though. It's just not in my hands. Now I don't wanna do something different on each side. But that's the combo I'm working on right now. I'm gonna be working on it off stream. I might stream tomorrow. I might not. I don't know. We'll see. And then hopefully that, um, combo trial video comes out next week too. Hopefully the combo trial comes out next week. But I'm gonna be working more on Viper. I'm definitely gonna be playing more matches next week. I'm just gonna, I need to, I need to grind. I need to grind and I needed to start. But I can't start it with nothing. I can't be Mr. Strike Throw with Crimson Viper. I can't do it. Even though she has, she does have a throw loop. Uh, but thank you so much for watching. If you found a vod, I appreciate you. If you were watching live, I appreciate you. I'll be back. I'll be back Monday at, at, for sure. Tomorrow, I might be... I'll be back Monday, at, at, for sure. Tomorrow, I might be back, I don't know. Probably not, cuz I'm probably gonna be editing that combo video. I'll see, I don't know. But, uh, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Short stream, but I think it's good for my muscle memory.